If I could tell you what time it is. It's six o'clock. I'm calling. At six o'clock, I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Banderas. It's Thursday, February 4th, 2021. We are in the conference center at Best Western Hotel at 7/11 Main Street here at Banderas. All council members are present, City Secretary is present, our Marshal Will is present. And with that being said, Will, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Yes, ma'am.
We go rise.
Most gracious and loving Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all together this evening. We ask for your blessings upon this meeting and your wisdom and grace upon the members of the Banderas City Council. We'd ask for your blessings upon all the visitors that are coming this weekend, that they might come, travel in safety, enjoy themselves while they're here safely, and take their way back to their respective homes also safely. Lord, I ask you to watch after my officers this weekend so they might have a safe weekend and get home to their families. Lord, most of all, we'd like to thank you for your son who died upon the cross for our many sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Uh, flag. Well, we know there's one at the courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item three, if visitors can be heard. This time to set aside for your wishes to the rest of the City Council. Presentation should be limited to no more than three minutes. Individuals not able to attend due to space limitations may email the City Secretary at least two hours prior to the meeting and provide your comments to the room. Jill, do we have anyone here who's signed up?
Uh, no one here is signed up, but I did have one come in on email today from the Banderas County Historical Commission, so I'll read that now.
Okay.
The Banderas County Historical Commissioner has identified the iconic Banderas Water Tower as a historic landmark for the community. They would like to seek a formal historic landmark designation for the tower from the Texas Historical Commission and hope the city of Banderas will support this effort. The water tower is known as a ten-man water tower because of its resemblance to the ten-man Wizard of Oz. At one time, these pre-engineered water towers could be found throughout the state, but they have solely been replaced by newer designs. Today, they are an endangered species with only six of this type of water tower remaining in Texas. The tower and the water station building beneath it was state-of-the-art when it was constructed as a Works Project Administration, or WPA, project as part of the New Deal Program during the Great Depression. For Banderas, excuse me, the water tower is part of the community's identity and is one of the first downtown features residents and tourists see when they are entering the town from Highway 16. It's important, the work done, to preserve the water tower as a historic landmark is done before this historic site is threatened. To receive a recorded Texas Historic Landmark Designation, the Historic Commission will need the city's permission to pursue this designation. And adding to granting permission, the Historic Commission would also need access to the buildings and any records that may exist. The Banderas County Historical Commission hopes that this is a project the city will support. Commissioner members look forward to having further discussions with city officials about this proposition.
Thank you, and I do have a brief comment to that. Once the tower is de-commissioned, we will definitely be looking toward a resolution to that very, very goal. Thank you. All right, at this time, council, Mr. Ramirez has joined us today. I would like to bring item five to the top of the agenda, our interviews with the applicants. We have the other two applicants standing by via Zoom. So that being said, unless there's an objection, okay, we'll move on to item five, closed session. The City Council will meet in closed session pursuant to Texas Department Code 551.074 personnel to interview applicants for the city administrative position. So at 6:04, I am resetting the agreement. The open meeting, if you would all leave the room at this time, please. Mr. Ramirez, you as well. I'd like to speak with council for a minute, please.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. You guys can put your best.
Um, just for the public, I'm going to pause this meeting at this time, but when we start the next interview, I will be ending the session because we can't have two meetings running at the same time. But as soon as I end it, you can log back in immediately and you'll be able to sit in the waiting room until I resume that meeting. Okay? Thank you. And I'll make another announcement after they come back in before I cancel it. Thank you.
7:45. I'm reconvening the open session. Action number six is action following the closed section. Where's Rebecca? I've lost Rebecca. Well, we still have a quorum of council present. I'll read slowly. The City Council will convene following session for any action recommended to be taken during the closed session. Counsel, do you want to wait? Tony?
I'd like to make a motion. To proceed with references being called and background checks on the three applicants that we interviewed tonight.
Darcy seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor and not opposed. All right, council, let's go back to item four, discussion and possible action on the following items. Amending the Banderas Economic Development Corporation bylaws, Section 3, BEDC Board of Directors, 3.01, number and requirements. Let me give you a little background on this. We're moving right along, Rebecca. The motion passed unanimously with those that were present to do background checks on the three applicants that we had tonight. Okay, on the board of directors, what you see before you is what was adopted by a previous council. It's the recommendation of our attorney, which is, goes by more or less the state statute. However, council proceeded to amend this, that the, of the seven members, five had to be city residents and two could be county residents, but they had to have a storefront. In addition, our attorney, if you look under number one and two, be a resident of the city, and he agreed to put a colon and an or, be, to be a resident of the county. So that's where we're still currently sitting on this. We've got a board of seven, five city residents, and two county residents with a storefront. The reason this hasn't been amended is because we don't have a resolution amending it to go before the council and then to go before EDC for ratification. So, from there, your thoughts? Darcy?
I'd like to make a motion that we return back to resolution number 97-01.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Which is what?
Sir?
You said revert back to what?
That we go back to...
May I second?
Yes.
So we can open for discussion?
I need a second first. Second?
Sure.
Rebecca, seconds. Okay. You want to repeat your motion, Darcy?
My motion is that we revert back to resolution number 97-01.
Thank you. Discussion?
Can I have an explanation of that?
I'm not familiar with what she's talking about.
Well, she's, okay, she wants to go back to what the council that you were on previously amended, okay, explains what we amended it to.
I don't know what.
She wants to revert to the original document that was prepared by our attorney using this language that you have before.
Oh, the or.
Okay, adding the or.
Okay.
What is this saying here with the five?
Yes, Jerry.
It doesn't.
So that would leave it open where you could have possibly seven county residents and no city people, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That I'm very much against. I think at a minimum, we should have a majority of city council or of EDC board members should be city residents. And then to not have it where even the county people have to have a business, what's the real vestment in this city? I don't see any. So I feel strongly that, you know, especially without a business, that they really shouldn't be on EDC.
Thank you. Yes, Darcy?
Um, so the reason that I would make such a motion is because, you know, all of our applicants, if you noticed from the last round, were from the county. We had zero from the city. The reason that City Council is over EDC, we can choose to appoint or not appoint members from the county or the city. So if we don't want a committee of seven county residents, we don't appoint a committee of seven county residents. We don't have to do that. It's just that we can, and we don't have to continually change resolutions. We don't have to continually change the EDC repeatedly every time a council changes, which also incurs attorney charge, attorney fees for both the EDC and City Council, which I don't like. It's not a good use of taxpayer money. And I think that the storefront thing, I was on EDC. I don't own a business. I've never owned a business, but I think that I had great ideas. We need things done because of government buildings. I have a wealth of knowledge, I believe, that brought forth good stuff for the EDC too. We need outside ideas. We need different ideas. So just because somebody doesn't have business experience or doesn't own a business at the time, should not disqualify them from the EDC. However, I am one person on the council, and that can change, so we can vote or not vote them.
Rebecca had her hand up. Rebecca?
Okay, so I want to direct a couple of my comments to the comments that I've heard from council members. Councilmember Russ. Russ, your statement that you don't see that people living outside of the city limits do not have any vested interest in the city, I just find that I really very much disagree with, because the city is the hub of the county essentially. And to limit our intellectual resources, I think is personally a poor move when we have such a small population. And if folks who live in the county are willing to contribute to that and they have knowledge and value to add, then I for one am a fan of utilizing those resources. And then my other comment is just back to Darcy, and I understand what you're saying. Every time a council comes in, they change EDC, but there's nothing that's going to potentially stop that from happening. That's the council's discretion to remove and appoint, so there's nothing that's going to change a future council from, or stop a future council from changing anything that we do or don't do. But I think that it's a step in the right direction to revert to the requirements identified in the state statute and not limit ourselves any further at this time. Thank you.
Tony?
So I'd like to be clear on what that actually means. That means that when it was that we revert back to the state's specification of...
Tony, may I interrupt you? I believe the motion was to revert to the previous EDC bylaws and not the state statute.
That's not what, no, that's not what she said.
97-01 was the motion, which is what?
Exactly, which is what none of us have, and so I asked to look at it, and so now I'm clarifying. It doesn't have anything in there as far as specifications of whether or not you live in the city or county. So that would mean that if we don't have it in our local ordinance, we divert to the state. I learned that on my first round of City Council. If it's not specified in the sign ordinance, we revert back to the state. So that's why the oning thing was an issue. So we revert back to the state. So what the state states is that each director of a type B corporation, which is what ours is, is authorized to be created by a municipality with a population of less than 20,000, must be a resident of the municipality, be a resident of the county in which the majority part of the area of the municipality is located, or, and then, so it has a bunch of ors, but I guess what I'm asking is there is no or between a resident of the municipality or a resident. And so that's what the state says, and I don't know how old that is and what, so it's this one. So...
Go ahead, Darcy.
That was my question. I'm trying to clarify her motion before we go any further, because I really don't. I think...
Okay, Rebecca? Rebecca?
Me? Okay. One, resident of the city or municipality. Two, as you stated, resident of the county, or majority of the part where the municipality is located. Three, reside within 10 miles of the municipality's boundaries.
So...
So that's an option also. And then, and then also, the last one just states that at least, at least three directors are not employees, officers, or members of the government body. So those are all the requirements in the state statute, and is that what you're suggesting that we're adopting?
So the way, so the way I read this was whenever you get down to three, that, that has to do with municipalities that cross over county boundaries. And so that last part does not apply to us. So that's why I asked, the ones that are bolded are the ones that apply to us. But that's my interpretation of it.
Darcy?
If I may amend my motion?
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would love to amend my motion. I'd like to amend my motion to where the EDC may be comprised of anyone that lives within the Banderas County lines.
And the rest of it stand as far as the qualifications?
Just that they live within the Banderas County lines.
That's unclear.
And it, you know, other than that, it has to follow the state statute.
Okay.
Shouldn't be this hard.
Rebecca, do you want to second that, or the amended motion?
I didn't second the first one, so that would not be my role. But I have a comment.
I'll second it.
It has to be, I'm sorry, does it need to be the same second or? Same second or not? Suzanne?
I have Rebecca down as a second. Darcy made the motion, Rebecca second.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I did. I thought you did, Jerry. My mistake. Thank you for clarifying. I apologize.
No problem.
So yes?
Okay. Any further discussion? Rebecca?
Yeah. Darcy, I apologize. I remember trying to get your attention now. I'm sorry. So I'm a little confused as to why not just leave it with what the state statute says and just leave it with what the state statute says.
I'm great with that, but if people are, if it's confusing, I don't want it to be confusing.
Well, in my opinion, it's just simply that 3A and B don't apply to us, but it doesn't hurt, so they're just irrelevant. They're still in the statute. They can still be a part of what we adopt, but they're just not going to matter either way. So those would be the only two that I would recommend taking out, because the way you stated it, you didn't include 3C, which is state law, which we have to follow. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but then you don't have to put it in a motion. If it's law, it has to be done.
Okay.
I mean, I, so this is what I wrote. I wrote, go to state mandate. That's what I want, to go to state mandate.
Then make that motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to amend my motion again.
Okay, Darcy.
Or retract my, all of my motions and make the motion to go to state mandate for the EDC.
I'll second.
Tony seconds. All right. Let me get back to my notes here. Further discussion? Rebecca?
To clarify, we're adopting Section 505.052 restriction on board membership for our EDC number and requirements bylaws.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Discussion?
I would just like to make another comment. I, I could see opening it up a little bit more for maybe making it three county people. I, once again, cannot agree with making it where it could be off just counting. It's just my opinion.
Tony?
So I sort of touched on this last week when we talked about it, and I am sincere when I say this. We do not have a residence in our city, and we talked about the struggles. More residents of the city are moving out, or they, they work in San Antonio and they're not around so that they feel like they can't volunteer. A lot of our houses are being used for vacation rentals. We don't have the support within our city to get intellectual, like, what did you, what was the word you used?
Our intellectual.
Resources, intellectual resources to, to fill a seven-member board. Every person that has ever applied for the, as a county, has genuinely been someone that has wanted to be involved, wanted to do the right thing, is invested one way or another. They either have property here, they just, you know, they live here, their majority of their life is in the city, maybe they live in the ETJ. What this does, in my opinion, is it gives us the flexibility to take candidates to fill a seven-member board, to work well together, to move forward with new ideas. And at any point, at any point, whether a term is up or not, a city council, if they feel as though an EDC is not following the overall agenda of what Simple City comes up with, or supporting the budgets that we set forth, any council from this one forward has the right to accept applications. Maybe we don't turn the applications off. Maybe we're constantly advertising it for new ideas. Get people in there to have a, have a conversation. They can sit in the audience and get, get involved and have their ideas, but it doesn't mean that they have to be on the city, and it gives the council flexibility to fill that board with qualified people. And, and I really thought long and hard about this, and I do believe that the city needs to step up. But when we do get good qualified applicants, then we compare them to the ones that we've got on the EDC, and we look at that EDC as a whole, and we make the best decisions for the EDC to move forward, not because, you know, for whatever reason. And that is my, and clearly, it's my strong opinion, because I just got really vocal, so I apologize. Thank you.
Jerry?
And I understand the concerns there, and I can appreciate that at the same time. That was one of the reasons that our city attorney had recommended that we open it up to city council members being on there and city staff. So I feel more comfortable with, which I don't typically agree with, but I would feel more comfortable with the city council members that are currently on there remain on there until we get more city applicants. I think the people that are on there now are highly qualified and will do a great job in the meantime. I understand that not everybody necessarily wants to remain on there, but I think that would make it a lot easier and there wouldn't, there's a lot of great experience that, for example, you bring. You've dealt with EDC for so long. Rebecca?
Oh, I'm all.
Same thing. Well, I'm just bringing it up.
Okay, just for clarification, currently Christine, Tony, and I, and Laura LaSoya are sitting on the EDC. Darcy?
I'd like to call for a vote, please.
Okay. We ready to go? All right. All in favor? Christine, Rebecca, Darcy, and Tony are in favor, opposed? Jerry is opposed. Okay, we'll get a resolution amending the bylaws and have that ready for the next City Council meeting. Item B, appointment of one or more members to the Board of Directors of the Banderas Economic Development Corporation.
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion, Jerry.
I'd like to nominate Jared Wilcox for EDC board member.
I'll second.
Darcy seconds. Rebecca?
Um, you're discussing appointment, correct, not nomination? So that...
Correct, appoint.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay, everybody clear? Discussion? All in favor? All in favor and not opposed. Motion?
May I ask a question?
Jerry?
So we have how many we can fill?
We have three vacant positions right now.
Okay.
We've just filled one. Got two to go. Tony?
So since that, since that motion we just made is not ratified, we have three county positions and that's it. And that's all the applicants that we've gotten so far are county. So we could, we don't have to fill all of those seats, but we could fill all of those seats with county applicants until it's ratified, then the rest of us aren't, are still on there until, until it's completed.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Or...
Jerry?
Or we could also go ahead and elect...
Of course, I mean, there's variables anywhere you want to do.
Making a contingent upon the ratification. Is that correct?
I don't...
Yes, Darcy?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Lauren O'Hara to the EDC contingent on the ratification.
Rebecca?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Discussion?
Wait, 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 wait. Why is this, why is this, we have three vacant county seats, so why is this dependent on the ratification?
We have, we have three vacant seats, period. Y'all have just amended the bylaws.
We haven't officially amended them because of, we haven't done the ratification. So what I'm saying is, I'm asking Darcy why her, why her motion to put a county person in a county seat according to current bylaws was dependent on the ratification. So that's my question.
If the county seats open by the, I'd put her in.
Okay, timeout.
Please. Can I have a question?
We already have Laura LaSoya sitting at a county seat.
That's what's my question.
And we have four of us in the city, no, three of us in the city, sitting on the count, on the EDC.
And so currently, our rules are limited, were limited to two.
Right.
So therefore...
Jared is a county resident with a storefront.
Right. So it's my understanding that per Jerry's suggestion and Darcy's motion to appoint Lauren, contingent on the ratification of the new bylaws.
Sounds good to me.
Is that accurate? Okay, my comment is over.
Okay, you want to repeat the motion?
Do you need, do you need it repeated?
Well, pending ratification of the new bylaws.
Correct, that's it.
Okay, all understood? Okay, discussion? All in favor? All in favor and not opposed?
Um...
Any other recommendations or nominations, counsel?
Um, I'd like, may I?
Yes, Rebecca.
I'll move to appoint Alan Arterberry, also pending ratification of bylaws.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jerry. See, I really can't hear. Discussion? This is pending ratification, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? All in favor and not opposed. All right. Counsel, it's after eight o'clock. If we're going to have a special meeting in the very near future to consider the references on our city administrator applications, would you consider postponing the rest of this agenda until a later date? Rebecca?
No, but can I make a comment about our current agenda item before we move on?
Sure.
So as we could potentially have more appointments, should Christine, Tony, and Suzanne step down as was committed to upon appointment, do we not, is there, are there any other motions for appointments contingent on those seats vacating? Are any of you planning on stepping down?
Okay, let me clarify this for you, please. I intend to step down. My term is up next month, any, oh, March of 2021.
Okay.
So I will be stepping down. I would like to, whatever council decides to appoint liaisons, I would like to be a liaison to the EDC, simply to make sure that as much has been dumped in, we have, that y'all will know what we're going, where we're going. I would be more than happy to work with you, make sure those polishing procedures are all done according to 501 and 505. Yes, Jerry?
I would like to recommend that at least Tony stays on there for transition, not to put you on the spot, but...
Well, that's really enough of the discussion for right. Well, that's really enough of the discussion for right now, but I...
It's kind of like no offense.
I'm just saying that very...
Because we're talking about removing, going ahead and resigning some of them.
Yeah, I'm just saying that very soon I will be stepping down.
Yeah, and that's fine, but I would like to see someone there with stability that has the experience to remain on there for a period of time.
Okay.
Christine had her hand up.
Christine, you had a comment?
No.
Are you...
Tony, you have a comment?
Of course I plan on stepping down once we know we have enough.
Okay.
Okay, and that's, that's where I am. I haven't been involved in the EDC since June, so I don't know how much transition or what stability I can give. I mean, I can give history before that, but, and I would still be involved anyway, even if it wasn't, I mean, if you needed that history. I mean, just like we transitioned when I left, Suzanne, I mean, I'm not abandoning the EDC, but I feel as though that if our seats are full and we haven't ratified, there's no emergency at this point and that we ratify it and then go from there. And so, and then we can put it back on our agenda next, but we at least have all the seats filled so that if we needed a quorum for something, that we have resources to pull from.
Okay.
Okay, any other motions or discussions? Darcy?
Regarding what you asked before we started another discussion, I would really like to see us go ahead and do number seven because we've tabled that or pushed it forward multiple times already.
Number seven.
Number seven, a closed session?
I would like to see us go ahead and take care of that.
Counsel, I would like to have a motion to either A, postpone the rest of this agenda with the exception of item seven, or an agenda to postpone, or a motion to postpone the balance of the entire agenda. So you want to make a motion, Darcy?
I'd like to make a motion.
Suzanne?
Jerry?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the remainder items on the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second? Rebecca seconds.
I...
Yes.
May I comment?
Did you second?
I did.
Thank you.
I'd like to see this be addressed at the top of our next agenda item.
Absolutely.
So we can take care of it immediately.
Tony?
I have a question. So he just said agenda, is that including the closed agendas or just the open agendas? Okay.
The remainder.
And as soon as we can get responses back, this is part of a comment, we'll try to schedule a special meeting ASAP. So that being said, item seven, we'll go to the top of the next agenda, Tony?
I would like to remove number nine from Jerry's request to postpone.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like him to consider an amendment to...
Did you hear Tony, Jerry?
No, Tony, I didn't hear your motion, your comment.
I said I would like to request Jerry to remove number nine from his motion to postpone the rest of the agenda.
I understand. That's request and announcements, Jerry? Will you amend your...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your motion to include number nine?
With the exception...
So done.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to postpone with the exception of item nine.
And Rebecca seconds. Thank you. Darcy?
Because I haven't been on council very long, I don't know how many is, I believe there's a certain number of times an item can be moved. How many times is that? Because number seven has been moved at least three times.
I agree that needs to be considered and it will be at the top of the next agenda instead of the bottom of the next agenda. And hopefully we can have that next week and get it resolved.
Jill, do you know the answer to the number?
I don't.
Okay. But I think she's right.
All right. All in favor? Tony, Rebecca, Jerry, and Christine are in favor, opposed? Darcy's opposed. Thank you, Darcy. Okay, item nine, request by council to place items on a future agenda. Let me tell you some of the things we've got coming up on, it's a future agenda, so you can be prepared for this. March the 4th, well, let me back up. July the 10th, the Texas Water Development Board fifth project that Banderas has applied for is on the agenda for approval.
February 10th, Texas Water Development Board meeting.
Yes. Did I say the wrong date or something?
It's July.
February the 10th. Anyway, next week, Texas Water Development Board is going to consider our application and from all indications, it's on the approval agenda, which means it will be approved. And on March the 4th, our finance advisor, Ben Rosenberg, will be here to explain to us what's involved, what we need to do. There's quite a bit of paperwork to do. The bond council will be involved, the financial advisor, City of Banderas, that's on March the 4th. On February the 18th, we'll be considering a resolution that was brought to me by Jana Lindig, our county attorney, that is in support, it'll be, it's a, it'll be a petition to the Texas Legislature. Our resolution will be in support of naming a portion of Highway 173 and Highway 16, the Master Sergeant Rodney Bontello Memorial Highway. That will be coming to you on the 18th. Yes, ma'am?
So some of these items that we've just tabled are going to be added to our special meeting that we're going to have next week?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So at this point, I think I would like to add discussion regarding the fifth program specifically and possible amendments to...
What do you want to discuss exactly?
You know what, I'm going to hold off on that, actually.
Okay, please, let's talk about that before you, and get in conjunction with everybody else that's involved.
Well, that's why it needs to be on a council...
Yeah.
...meeting agenda. But we can wait till the regular meeting.
Anything else?
Let me, oh, wait, this is, this is request by council, request by council for agenda item. Okay, so I would like, in the three minutes, Rebecca Norton, regarding the 10-man water tower, I would, I would like that probably on our next regular meeting to...
At the regular meeting?
At the regular meeting, just to get more information and discuss, maybe not, I mean, I doubt we're at a point where we have action items, but I know that I would like some, a little more information regarding what the process is. And so I'd like to see that on our next regular meeting.
Anything else for a future meeting? Okay.
I got one other.
Yes, Tony?
So until we get an admin hired, can we, number one, can we kind of plan weekly Thursday meetings? And number two, can, or is, do we have any leeway to move like the special meeting up to five? I mean, does anybody's schedules, okay, I mean, I'm not saying do it all the time. I'm just saying the one with the, the one where we just tabled all these items for, that would, I would be okay, like for next week. To make sure that we don't keep getting down into...
That would make me very happy.
Okay, sorry.
To move the special meeting up?
Next week is...
Next week is the Simple City meeting on Thursday, so we can't do it next Thursday.
Our special meeting can't be on the...
Special meeting is on the 10th, which is the day before that.
Well, remember the special meeting, we can do it with four council members.
You just said we had a special meeting regarding the Texas Board and we were going to add all this on there. I thought that, okay. That was the one I was talking about, 5:00. Sorry.
No, there's a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
Rebecca?
Tony, the, the meeting on the 10th is a Texas Water Development Board, board meeting, not a city council meeting.
Oh, I thought they were coming to our meeting.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
However, since you mentioned that, I think the 10th would be a great day for our special meeting since we have the event on Thursday.
I would prefer that as well.
Well, if we get our information back in time?
Well, we already have practically a full agenda.
Yeah. Okay. And if we don't have it, then we table it. If we don't have the information, we table it. Because we have enough other stuff.
Announcements, Rebecca? I know you want to do your Simple City thing.
Okay, let me pull up the flyer this time, instead of saying it off the cuff. The DNA Roundup, join the city of Banderas as they host Simple City Designs' DNA Roundup, a community kickoff event to present a study of Banderas' original building patterns to facilitate a conversation about the future at 11th Street Cowboy Bar, Thursday, February 11th, at, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Kickoff DNA presentation at 5:30, community conversation to follow. Hope to see you all there. Are, are we going to do that on Zoom? Possibly.
Probably we can do parts of it, but I think they're going to be split, all the groups and stuff, so that'll be hard to have. Has our PNC been invited to that? They just got invited.
Everyone's invited.
I know, but I think it would, I think it would be something that would...
In case people aren't aware, the parade has been approved by the state.
Oh, yeah.
So Monte Grav Parade is on.
Yeah, it has. Okay, any further announcements? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Rebecca, Jerry seconds. Discussion? All in favor? All in favor, not opposed? At 8:21?